Welcome everyone to Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting of June 15th, 2021, approximately 5:00 PM. For everyone to please stand at this time, Commissioner Fleming is going to do our invocation and pledge.
Father, we come again in your name and thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for all your blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you for how you kept us and we thank you for all things. And Father, we thank you for this weather. We thank you for the rain and we thank you for everything. Father, we thank you for life, health, and strength. We pray that you be with us this day, look over these commissioners, oh God, as we do the county business, look over the constituents as they sit and listen, look over our community. We thank you and Father, we pray and we trust in your holy name that everything will be all right. Blessed though that are sick, continue to look over the Land family. Oh Father, we know that you're able to do all things and we know that you're able to heal bodies today and we pray that you look over their family, watch over and protect them, keep them safe. This we ask in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started this evening, I would like to just continue to express our thoughts and well wishes for Mr. Terry Land, Commissioner Land's father. He's basically our discussion before the meeting started back here when we was talking was about him and how he's doing and he has made some improvement but still got a long road ahead of him and we just continue to ask for prayers from the community to lift him up and support him. He's fighting a good fight there and I think he said today is 30 days he's been there and that's a long time to be sitting in a hospital bed. So we want to get him out, get him home, get him back with us. But our thoughts and prayers are continue to be with him.
Thank you.
First item of business this evening will be approval of minutes from our June 1st, 2021 regular board meeting. Any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale, a second by Commissioner Land. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving ahead to our consent agenda, we have items two through 13. Do I have any questions or comments at this time or do I have a motion to approve these items?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming.
A second.
Have a second by Commissioner White. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving ahead, we have to general business. Item 14, set date, time, and location of budget workshop. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you've got some proposed dates in your packet. We just need for you to either confirm those dates, August 4th and August 5th, 9:00 at this location unless there's a conflict or y'all want to move it someplace else. But right now, this is what's proposed. Typically, you would have your board meeting and then the next day you come in here, you spend a long day on Wednesday and then most of the time, we have a short day on Thursday. But it'll be whatever amount of time it takes to get the job done.
What was that date, Mr. Harris?
August 4th, Wednesday, August 4th.
Okay.
And Thursday, August 5th, 9:00.
I have any questions on this, comments, gentlemen?
I'm looking.
Everybody's kind of checking their phones, Mr. Harris. Give them just a second.
That is of 2021.
Yes, sir.
I'm good. I'm good.
Mr. Hale?
I don't think I have. I'm good as well. Yep.
You're good?
Yes, sir.
Mr. White?
I'm good.
Commissioner Fleming?
I'm, yeah, I'm good.
You're good?
Yes, sir.
All right, sir. So we've got that date set for, we have consent here.
Okay.
For August 4th.
And 5th.
And 5th. August 4th and 5th, 9:00 here at the Judicial Annex.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. This time, item number 15, set date, time, and location to hold a workshop to discuss fire and solid waste. Mr. Harris.
We have tried to put a date together that we thought would work best for the commission. I think we, last time we had a workshop, we had it before your regular meeting and that's what we've done here, scheduled this for July 20th, the Judicial Annex at 3:00. So the consultants will be here to go over the work that they've done and be able to answer any questions that Commissioners may have. Tuesday, July the 20th at 3:00.
Does that work?
I'm good. Yes, sir.
Tuesday at what?
3:00.
3:00.
3:00. Then we'll have our regular board meeting at 5:00.
Okay.
Everybody good?
Everybody okay? All right.
We have consent on that, Mr. Harris.
Okay, thank you.
This time, moving ahead to item number 16, discuss with possible board action tractor lease agreement. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, one thing that we needed to discuss was the tractors that are going back, I guess is what started the initial delay to provide a little more time for everyone to take a look at it. That's the first thing that we need to consider is do we want to keep any of those tractors that are otherwise scheduled to be returned that we currently have? I think the bid number's pretty high myself. I'm not recommending that we keep any. We've been able to keep up with everything that we need with the tractors that we have and we can continue to do that unless the board chooses to do something different.
Gentlemen, have thoughts?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner White.
I'd recommend not purchasing any of them as the buyback on them is about twice what it needs to be to make it worthwhile to do that. So I'm just not, I'm not in favor of keeping any of the tractors that we currently have.
Fair enough. Any other comments, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Do I have consensus? That's what we do?
For me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, not buying any of center mowers.
I'm good with that.
What is that date?
The date that they're going back? Let's see.
October 1st?
I'm not sure. I know the new lease was, new lease payments would be October 1st, but I don't remember what the exact date is that they'll be going back. In any event, the other thing that we need to address is the replacement of those, all of those tractors that are going back. And we had put a package together. We had vendors that had provided information based on a Sheriff's Association contract or some competitively bid contract. And then we postponed that. We had prices from Ring Power and AgPro. We postponed in your last meeting to give Kubota an opportunity to provide a number. So last Friday, we received their number and that's what went out in your packets. The schedule that you received in your packets, or the second page actually that was in the packet, showed those numbers and Ring Power was the lowest price based on that package that we had sent out on, that was Friday when we sent the packets out and everyone received them. On Monday, we received new numbers from Kubota, another set of numbers. They changed, well, they changed, I think they changed the tractors, but they changed the numbers for sure and came in with a lower price, but that package is still higher than the Ring Power numbers that you have.
Mr. Harris, I've got a question.
Okay.
If we have a bid process, I mean, we can't really accept another number after we've accepted all the numbers and...
We would not traditionally do that and I'm not recommending that you start now, to be quite frank with you. This is based on, was based on Sheriff's Association contract numbers. We did send the packets out with all the numbers in them the end of last week. Kubota's numbers were in there at that time. They were high at the time. Yesterday, they sent an email and wanted to present numbers that were adjusted from what they had initially sent us. If we were in a conventional bid scenario, we wouldn't even open another envelope that someone wanted to send or even acknowledge it in a bid scenario. So this is unique. We don't typically do that. But it was emailed in to us, so I went ahead and forwarded it to you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, so you're saying, can I say something?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Fleming.
So you're saying that on yesterday, you received another lower number from Kubota?
Kubota sent numbers yesterday that were lower, but they're still higher than Ring Power.
And it's something that we never done.
We've never even entertained additional numbers after companies have been given an opportunity to present us with their quotes.
Yeah.
And again, the only reason that I provided that information is because we received And our typical bids when we open, when we do sealed bids and we open those here, we won't even accept an envelope and bring it in here to be considered to be opened if it has come in after the deadline when we do sealed bids.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Was, did, I just want to be clear, was Kubota, were they, were they included in the original bid package that went out? I don't want to, I mean, I know they're new to town, so I don't want to shortchange them any, but did they get, were they a part of the original bid? I mean, when we first started this, because I know we've taken...
When it was first started, we used the Sheriff's Association contract numbers. We put that together and we brought that to you. So no, they were not a part of that and it's pretty obvious that Ring Power's lower. So we postponed everything.
Yeah.
Gentlemen.
And we gave them an opportunity then to put numbers together and send them to us and that's what they did.
Okay. I'm just looking for a little clarification.
Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Darryl Futch, 125 High Worthy Court, Palacka, Florida. I'm the owner of Futch's Tractor Depot.
Welcome, sir.
All right. I really want to kind of explain what happened. You know, we appreciate y'all postponing it two weeks ago. We got with Mr. Shannon and there were some specs, but they were somewhat vague and so he had told us that he wanted 115, at least 115 horsepower tractor. So we, we have an M111 that, you know, we sell to counties all the time for roadside mowing, but that wasn't 115 horsepower. So we went to our 131, which is about a $30,000 tractor more than the 111. And so we priced it at that and with the other things. And when I ended up getting the agenda and I looked through the bid and I seen what the other companies were bidding and they were bidding the tractor the same as the one, our 111, that's why they blew us out of the water was because of that price. And we, you know, this is not like a traditional bid because we got numbers on the Florida Sheriff's bid that we have to use. We can't deviate from them numbers. And so we, you know, asked Mr. Shannon if we could reprice it with our 111 and that's what we did based on the, based on the Sheriff's bid price and which put us at the PTO horsepower that was okay with operating the equipment. And that's what lowered our price so much because that tractor's a lot less expensive. You know, we're not low on the package deal because Kubota doesn't really do the boom mowers. We were going outside. We provide the tractor to the company that does the boom mower, so we're always high on that mower. That's just something that we don't really sell much of, but I tried to do it as a package. And what I was kind of hoping by rebidding it was that maybe y'all would consider splitting it up and maybe giving Cat or whoever the boom tractors and giving us the mowing tractors and the grapple tractors. And if you did that, between the two of us, a total bid would be $867,000, which would be a couple hundred thousand dollars less than what Caterpillar's bid is. And I understand the bid process and everything and like I said, it was, you know, that's kind of how we were doing it based on a, you know, bigger tractor, you know, before. But the bat wings, the grapples, the loaders and everything is the same as it was on the original bid. We just changed the type of tractor.
Yes, sir.
You know, from the 131 to the 111.
Gentlemen, you have any questions for this? Mr. Futch, this time?
But the 111 is a smaller tractor. You're saying 111 and the 131, that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Yes, but that's a smaller tractor.
Well, it's a smaller horsepower tractor and then the frame's a little bit lighter, but not, like I said, we just sold the same tractor package to Putnam County. We sold five of them, five of that, the mower, the tractor mower combination. And we sell, you know, we sell a lot of roadside mowing companies and that's what most people use. But like I said, Mr. Shannon said it needed to be at least 115. But when you go back to the other bids, like John Deere, their tractor's about 105 horsepower that they specked out with like 85 PTO power. Massey is 115 with like 93 or 94 PTO power. Ours is 111 horsepower with 89 PTO horsepower. So it's a big enough tractor to run the equipment. It's pretty much the same as other, other two competitors are putting out. We just didn't have, we, you know, we didn't have a whole lot of specs to go by. You know, we, you know, Mr. Shannon, he did a great job helping us with it, trying to get it and we, you know, came over, met with him and, you know, but he was adamant about being 115 horsepower, so that's why we went. Our next size tractor up from the 111 is the 131. It's a different series. It's an M6 compared to an M5. So it's like I said, it's $30,000 more.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Futch. So, because I saw the first numbers that you bid and you are, Kubota was substantially higher, way away from the competitors. And that was because the tractor was a more expensive, more horsepower tractor than what the competitors quoted?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And then when you figured, you figured that out?
Yeah, then that's we...
That's what, I'm just trying to figure out the, what happened.
Yeah, when we, when I got the agenda and looked at what everybody was, what tractors everybody was bidding, we were, we were way out, not even looking at the price.
I understand.
And if you look at our price that we came back with, you know, we weren't, you know, these prices are guaranteed by the sheriff's bid. We, you know, so that's why we're, you know, we're 12,000, 12,000, 15,000 a year payment lower, not, you know, if I'd have came back at 500 lower than them, then yeah, I wouldn't be doing the right thing. But we, we based it just on the sheriff's bid that, that has for that equipment.
Just, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hale.
Just to be clear, the number that we see here is the, with the 111 horse.
Right. The last number, yes.
That's right, okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Futch, at this time?
Thank you, sir.
We'll have a discussion now.
I can understand that there was some discrepancy, but at the end of the day, we bid this as a package and at this time, my support's going to be with, going with the low number on the total package. If we was bidding just the tractors and it was a separate packages, then I would, I would say we would, I would be in favor of entertaining something different, but the total package is less. I understand that the, the number on the mower and the bat wing is different, but we have to make a decision tonight, gentlemen, sir. I need input from each one of you.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, the Ring Power tractor, Massey Ferguson tractor does meet our specification.
Is the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris, the Ring Power tractors with the saw heads and all, are those Massey Ferguson's as well?
Yeah, they're, all of those are Massey Ferguson.
And those, those annual costs with the lease payments, does that include the finance charges in there?
Shannon, you're going to have to help me with that one because I can't remember. We ran that through lease, was that the lease due number or was that the Ring Power number? Because we ran it, yeah, we ran it both ways. That's why I can't remember.
I'm just going to sit here if there's any other things that'd be easy.
So, yeah.
So...
Finance charges in there.
Are in, in, I'm looking at the sheet that's got the four bids on it.
All inclusive.
Yeah, correct.
Everything's there.
The saw heads and the flail heads that's on these Massey Ferguson's, is it the same, same ones that's spent on the Challenger tractors that we had or is it a different brand or, I know they fit them on those tractors, but...
I believe they're the same ones.
Yeah.
In fact, I think they said the tractor's made on the same line, didn't they?
The tractor is made on the same line as the Challenger. The, those additional heads are, I don't know what company makes them.
Well, what I'm...
Diamond, if it's diamond, it's the ones we have now.
Well, that's what I was getting at. So we've had good service out of those heads on those tractors?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hale.
So with that question being asked, I heard Mr. Futch say that there were certain piece of equipment that Kubota just didn't offer and that's why maybe the price was different, but I'm hearing that...
It's the one with, with the booms?
The one with the booms, but, but Ring Power, Massey offers, I guess they can provide all of that. And if not, they've all, they've figured it in with whatever Challenger.
Yes, sir. And AgPro and John Deere had the same challenge. They have great equipment for the mowers and the grapples, but they had to treat those, the flail mower and the booms, they had to do something different. They have to...
Everyone had some challenges there.
Take those, do something else to them and bring them back in order to package it.
I got you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Futch something?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Futch, what brand is that saw head and flail head on that Kubota tractor in New Holland?
Alamo.
Alamo? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So what, what you're saying is, is tonight, you want to, you don't want to separate it out. You don't, you don't, you don't want to go with the, the lower, you don't, you don't want to do it as a package.
I just feel like that's how we bid it and I just think for the integrity of what we've done and the way that we try to be fair to everybody and I understand there was a mistake and I feel like Shannon gave the folks, and maybe I'm not speaking with complete knowledge, but I feel like whoever bid on it, whether it was Ring Power or John Deere or Mr. Futch, everybody got the same paper that showed what we wanted. If it was misunderstanding, I mean, two of them got that right. And that's no disrespect to Mr. Futch. I, I want him to be welcome to this community and I want him to, to be a part of it.
John Deere, what, they're at 105, 106 horsepower tractor, not 115. That's kind of what started our discussion and looking at it. Massey is the 115, but the tractor that John Deere's backed out at 105, 106 horsepower.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something?
Yes, sir.
So the exact same specifications were gave, were given to every company. I did not coach them or ask them to do anything special. So I gave engine horsepower and some folks may take a look at engine horsepower and then others may focus on horsepower at the PTO shaft. So I didn't give them any direction. I was specifically vague with all of them to say, this is the minimum specification and I'm asking you, with your expertise and your knowledge of mowing and tree trimming equipment, to create a package that can deliver the service that the county needs. I showed them a picture of everything we had, every vendor, and then I put it into their hands to use their knowledge to craft their own recommended solution based on those specifications.
Is that the same specifications we've been using?
Yes, sir. We've had those tractors. We're going into our fifth year.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Futch, what brand mowers are?
Land Pride.
Land Pride?
Yes, Kubota. Kubota holds great land, land, and that's why.
And Ring Power, do we know what brand that is?
Land Pride.
It's Land Pride?
Yes, sir.
So same thing?
Yes, sir.
And this is for, what is the amount of tractors here?
Total of 10 units. There are four mowing tractors with the tractors and mowers. There are two grapple tractors. There are two mowers with a 22-foot boom and a 50-inch flail head and then two additional for a total of 10 that have a 30-foot boom with a saw head on it.
I got, I see the unit numbers. I just wanted to be clear on that, that that's what we was looking at.
Mr. Chairman, I want to...
Yes, sir. Commissioner Fleming.
Okay, now, all of these is the, the whole complete package deal? What are we talking about? This, the 10 and the four different ones that you was talking about?
All part of the package.
All part of the package.
Yes, and that was communicated via email to Mr. Futch and his team back on, I believe it was June the 7th. I wanted to be clear, I had already talked to them verbally. We had already gone over the specifications. I went over them with Mr. Futch and Mr. Freeman, who also works at Tractor Depot. I then sent a follow-up email to make sure it was clarified and I specked it out, all 10 tractors. I didn't approach it as one-off, a set of this. We would break it up in consideration. It was a package deal as I had done with the other two vendors.
Well, I just want to be clear on that, that it was one package deal and...
Yes, sir.
You know, and when we make a decision, you know, you want to be clear on that.
I guess another way of explaining kind of my thoughts also on this is Mr. Futch was able to look at it and see that he was out of line regard, and I understand he's saying horsepower, so that, that changed his numbers, but my point being is if I would have had Ring Power or John Deere come back today and said, well, we want to give you a different price, I would have had to accept those two.
Yes, sir.
Is, and I would be looking at those in addition. I mean, they could have lowered their price to be, that's...
The other question is lower and changing your specification. See, typically in your specification, you say this is the minimum spec and anyone can exceed it. So the idea that someone exceeds a specification is nothing new at all. That does happen from time to time. In this particular case, the minimum specification was a 115-horse tractor. If someone bids 120-horse tractor, that's fine, or 130-horse tractor, it's okay.
Excuse me, the reason we switched the real bid again, because I was setting John Deere's bid at 105 horsepower. If it would have been 115 horsepower, we wouldn't have done this, but if you don't step in John Deere's bid, it was saying that you were okay with us.
No, that isn't what we're saying. When we receive bids and we receive bids here, sealed bids, we treat the same way. We open all of them and we'll go through them and before we actually enter into a contract, we'll determine whether or not they've actually complied. In this case, we've got numbers, the specifications in here do comply with some. In fact, yours exceeded it and that was fine. We didn't have a problem with that because it exceeded the minimum. The John Deere tractor is smaller and now yours is smaller as well. So we didn't need to get in the conversation because the numbers spoke everything. It spoke volumes. Ring Power's numbers were just better than everyone. We didn't need to, they didn't need to be disqualified because of their spec because their number was already lower than everyone else. I mean, at the end of the day, they just had the best price.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Land.
This is, no matter what we do, it's one of those scenarios, we're not going to make everybody happy.
Right.
Somebody's going to leave here mad.
Or two people.
Or two people.
Two can be mad, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, either way you go here, somebody's not going to be happy, but you know, that's life. You know, I'm, I'm looking at the numbers and if you separate it out, the savings is substantial, but I understand also, you know, what, what you talked about and, and what Shannon, you know, discussed, so I'm kind of torn here, I guess, on the way to go because this is a, somebody's going to be upset situation.
Yeah. Well, the nice thing about this is, and it won't be long, we'll be bidding this thing again. Everybody have an opportunity again next time around.
Yeah. Look at it.
Well, I'd just like to say, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Futch, I, I don't want, I want you to keep coming back and bidding this stuff and I, it is a package bid and that's how we set it out and, and I'm, I'm sorry about the confusion that may have been there, but, and you being part of the community now, I don't want this to discourage you from doing this again. We'd love to have your bid again. I just want to put that out there to you.[1780.15] Sure.
Actually, about our business, you know, and being part of the community, and so that's why we've done this. We have done, we understand, we do this every day. We have, we've been part of the community for 10 years. We've had the whole state most of them years that we've seen. You know, we're in Haitian, Florida, we're selling Key West, this is what we do. We win some, we lose some. You know, because of the brand, not necessarily, on the sheriff's bid, it is what it is. There's no reaction for price. Yeah, so we understand. They're no longer at all, you know, I said, we just, being local.
Well, I'm a, I'm a business owner too, so I know where you're coming from. And I know it's discouraging, but.
Yeah, well, with the really way the bid ran, you know, breaking the tractor down individually, two of this, two of that, four of that, that we, you know, we looked at it like it could be a six-tracker deal or a four-tracker deal or 10-tracker, so we individually priced these tractors. Well, that's the way y'all wanted to bid, not as one lump sum, which, you know, wouldn't have made a whole lot of difference where we kind of looked at it. You know, maybe they, they could break it up if it was a destiny individual.
All right, gentlemen, we've discussed it. Now we need to find out what the pleasure of the board is, unless you have further questions.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any more questions, but I appreciate Mr. Futch saying what he's saying. And just so everyone knows, and I was clarifying that, even though the original tractor that you bid was a higher horsepower, when you come back with a closer to the spec bid, it was still just slightly higher than than the others. And I'm like, Mr. White, Commissioner White, I definitely want to support our community, but we also, as Commissioner Stapleton said, we got a bid process and integrity of that. I don't want anyone ever questioning, we question that. Have we ever, and maybe for future reference, I've heard Mr. Harris say, the good thing is we'll bid on this again soon, because it does seem like it comes around pretty often. Have we ever, just for future conversation, bid these things out separately, like just the mowers versus the tree, the bat, or the tree saws, whatever that?
I think that part of what has ended up with this package the way that it is, is that over the years, we've tried to get equipment replacement where it falls on October 1 or after October 1. And we've been manipulating timelines over the years to try to get them where we can do that with more of them at one time. You'll notice we do these large groups of graders at the same time. So that's what that boils down to. At some, I mean, yeah, we can split them out in the future.
Got you.
We can do any number of things in the future.
Well, it's just something to look at, if some of these numbers, if it's going to save overall, then maybe we could do something like that. As long as the benefits are still there. Sometimes buying them bulk.
Well, in my opinion, I think next time we just need to do a sealed bid.
Well, that's why I would like to say that.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I mean, it saves time to go with the Sheriff's Association contract usually, but next time around, we could just do a sealed bid and then whatever shows up, that's it. I mean, that's what we do, and we open those here publicly at a advertised time and typically open them on Tuesdays.
Well, I'm all in favor of that.
Sure. All right, gentlemen, what's the pleasure?
You need a motion?
Over the, over the time, over the entire term, it's 968, 968,772 dollars. It's 260, 242,194 dollars a year for four years.
But 968,72, 772 is what you say?
That's correct.
Because I was just wondering, because you go through some of this stuff, if you look at Ring Power, their numbers aren't the same. I don't see how it came up. If you look at page.
That's their total, not ours. Yes, sir. It's 968,772 over the four-year term.
Yep, that's, that's what it comes up to.
Can you verify that? Yes, sir. All right, gentlemen, at this time, do I have, I'll entertain a motion.
I make, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Ring Power bid for 242,194 dollars on all 10 tractors for a total of 968,772 dollar total lease.
I have a motion by Commissioner White.
I'll second it.
I have, I have a motion by Commissioner White. I have a second. My Commissioner Hale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries, gentlemen. I vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Futch, I, you know, can I say something?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I just want to encourage you, like Commissioner White said, and Commissioner Hale, and I think the sentiments are with Stapleton and Mr. Fleming as well. I mean, we're glad to have you in our community. The last thing that this board needs is to have questions about how we, the integrity of our bid process and going back and forth. I mean, I understand you were confused, and I understand if we broke it out, we could save a little bit of money by busting them out. But at the end of the day, you know, we need to uphold the integrity of the process, and there was a misunderstanding, and I get it. I hate it for you. We're glad to have you. I want you to come back, and I think the whole, this whole board would agree to that.
Absolutely.
I mean, we buy lawnmowers and everything else, so, you know.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Futch, I would like, I would like to say, say the same thing. I'm not saying I'm stuck between, stuck between a rock and hard place, but I've been in and out your store when it was Gordon's and the gentleman right here, sold me a tractor, Ford tractor. And he was very straight and very honest. And I, I look forward to coming back in there. The only thing I hate that, there's no Ford being sold out of there. Okay, all right. But I appreciate Kubota coming into the county, and I still, we'll be coming out buying stuff, purchasing stuff, making purchases and stuff, and it was very helpful. When I went in, I had a little issue with my tractor. And the guys, the mechanics that worked out there, they were, they were very honest and straight with me. And I was kind of hush-hush a little bit, but as, as Mr. Harris said, these years come by real fast. And maybe, maybe next year, but we appreciate your business coming into the county.
I said, we're going to be here, man. We do a lot for our community, so our stores are, yes, we receive the best thing. It involves a lot of things.
We appreciate you. And I know it's not much consolation, but the tractor in, in my barn's orange, and it come from your new dealership, so. Couple of years ago, but.
Thank you for doing it. Thank you for bidding it.
Thank you, Mr. Futch.
We appreciate you.
I appreciate y'all delaying it two weeks ago, but let's give it, give us some.
Yes, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. Man, we don't have any additional unit items. Thank you. At this time, I will open the floor to public. Any public comments? If I have anyone wishing to speak, please make your way to the podium at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment at this time. We'll go to closing comments. Mr. Pravat, you have any?
Chairman.
Oh, yes.
Before you do that, can I ask Mr. Norris to come up here? I know, I think he's got a few things he wants to bring to our attention, but I also want to bring to everyone's attention that our very own Jimmy Norris now just got elected vice chair of the NFEDP, is that right?
NFEDP, you're the board member there, sir.
Well, I didn't make the meeting. I wish I'd have been there.
That's what happens. You're, you're the new chair. I didn't tell you that.
No, I'm not. And just so you guys know, I mean, I know a lot of you folks think that this is the only meeting we have to come to the board members. Our plate is full, and this particular meeting just happened to fall, I think it was on a Friday, and it takes up pretty much the whole day. And it was just impossible for me to get to that meeting. And I hate it because they elected him vice chair. And I just want to congratulate him on that. And that means a lot for us, just so you guys know. And I want Jimmy to explain that, what, what the benefits I think for us in Swan County is.
Yeah, we're finally meeting back in person again, thank goodness. And we've had enough Zoom calls last year. But some of you guys have been to some of the NFEDP stuff before, and that is North Florida Economic Development Partnership. And so for some that may not be as familiar even out here, the state recognized that rural counties weren't probably represented as well as they should be a lot of times, especially on the economic development side. So they created what we call RAOs, which are rural areas of opportunity. And for us, that means there's 14 counties in the North Florida area that pool all their resources, and we get funding from the state, but also all of the counties pay to be a part of this organization. And we go out regionally to try to find projects. Commissioner Hale can, can tell you, one of the projects that he met with, with me and with NFEDP came to our area as a regional project and then was narrowed down to certain counties. So it's, it's a really important organization. Really enjoy being a part of it. There's 34 board members. If you can imagine 14 counties, each economic development professional, as well as the representative from the actual commission from each county sits on the board. So that gives you 28. Then you also have a representative from like the utilities company, like Duke, FPL, Swan Valley Electric, the educational system. So there's a total of about 34 board members. So it's a large group. I was surprised and honored to be able to be nominated for that. And so it hopefully will mean some exciting things. There's actually three R-RAOs in the state of Florida. We have ours, which is NFEDP. Then we have one over in the Panhandle, which is called Opportunity Florida. They actually have 10 counties. And then Florida's Heartland, which is, I can't see that far, Glades, Hendry, Okeechobee Highlands, De Soto, and Hardy. There's six counties in that little part of Florida. That's considered rural as well. So we have three of those groups. We all belong to a larger group called Frida, which is Florida Rural Economic Development Association. And we actually get together and have a conference. And this year, we are scheduled to do that. Typically, it's this time of year, but it has been put off till December. So if any of you guys are interested, you know, certainly you're welcome to attend. But just wanted to bring you update. We're back going, we're back meeting, we're doing some things.
Can I say something to that?
Yes, sir.
Something, and this was the first, like you said, meeting they had in person, but I'd attended several meetings by Zoom and call-in, things like that.
Right.
And the one thing I found about this board, and by the way, thank you, Chairman, for putting me on this board and taking yourself off there. I appreciate that, but.
Right here.
But what I found was, like you said, it's those small counties, and they're fighting for their share, you know, their fair part in this.
Yes.
And they all work together until you get down to that last three. And we happen to be in a few of these where we were some of the last three picks. But it's funny to see that's when the gloves come off, and that's when we're not necessarily on the same team anymore. But it's, it's, to me, and I'm just, I can't speak for Mr. Norris, but I'm telling you guys, when you get to the economic side of these, these projects, you got to be ready. You really do. And I'm thankful that we've been working in that direction. I'm thankful that we're getting there. I'm thankful for what Jimmy's doing and what this board is doing, and the previous board actually worked real hard on. So just, I can't say enough about it. It's an eye-opening experience. I do appreciate you putting me on the board because it's, I am enjoying it, and it's something I like, but.
Well, the one project we're working on, you know, we've, we've, we've tried about everything we know to try, so Commissioner Hale offered to give them a pedicure last time, so. We're waiting on that answer. We hopefully will know shortly on that. But it is a challenge. We do work as a team, and even if it goes to one of our sister counties, it helps us regionally.
It does.
So, but it's a great organization.
So with his title now, he leads the meetings?
He is the vice chair.
I'm the vice chair. It'll be two years before.
He'll, yeah, that's how that works. He'll be chair.
It's two years. Terms, yes, sir.
You know how long that meeting's going to last? You give him a microphone?
Listen, I couldn't see it when they called to tell me. I could just automatically see his head about eight times bigger than what it was, so, yeah.
That's pretty big. It's pretty big.
Swan County will be well represented when he gets to.
What, and that is an important piece, that we will be well represented, and we will be a part of things. If you guys remember this year, some of you participated before. I know Commissioner Fleming did with rural county days, when we were over at the Capitol, had the big fish fry, we met with everybody.
Don't mention that fish.
That got canceled this year. Well, this organization is the one that puts that on, okay? So that is already scheduled, put it on your calendars for January 26 and 27. Session is early next year. So we will be over there for two days. We'll be camping out, promoting all our rural counties, and frying a bunch of fish for all of our elected officials. And you were there that, for the reception that evening as well, that's right.
That was really nice.
Yep, yep. So if you guys can, put that on your calendar. So we're looking forward to it. Commissioner Hale, I want to jump back. One, you said about being prepared.
Yes.
I think the proof's in the pudding right now that when, when you have, when you're prepared, when you have what companies are looking for, it makes a difference on.
And you're right.
Being able to, being able to get them. I mean, by, by, by things that you guys have done and
Yep.
Mr. Harris and Mr. Pravat and things that they're working on over here could very well make a difference on them, on a project any day. And, and I know I've requested a lot of time. I'm fixing the finish commission, oh, Chairman. But from each one of you over the past two, three, four weeks on some things, and every one of you has obliged.
About ready to block your number.
Yeah, well.
It didn't take him long to catch on.
You're a quick learner, isn't he?
Whenever, whenever, whenever they tell you, they want to be sure that, that we all pulling the train the same direction, and that we got a team behind us that wants to see development. And when a company tells you that, and I call you guys and tell you I need you, I need you, and every one of you stepped up and stepped up in a big way. So thank you, and Mr. Harris, Mr. Pravat, you guys for what you're doing right now, too. So hopefully, better quit talking before I say too much.
He always starts it with, hey, man, you got a minute? 30 minutes later, you're like, dude, I got to go.
Or just checking in.
It's been 30.
Yeah.
Give me a call when you got a minute, right? So anyway, that's all I have. And Commissioner Hale, maybe you meet next week.
I will be there.
I nominated you for, well, I won't tell.
I'm sure you did. Sure you did.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Anything else, Mr. Hale, you had?
No, I think he said enough.
This time, we'll go to closing comments. Mr. Pravat, you have anything for us?
No, sir.
All right.
No, sir.
Mr. Harris, nothing?
No, sir.
Commissioner White?
Just like Travis will know, we're thinking about him, and let his dad know we're thinking about him. And I hope he gets out there soon.
Thank you.
Tell him it's time to go back to work.
I guarantee you, he's ready.
I guarantee you.
Commissioner Fleming?
I want to voice the same thing for Commissioner Lamb. We're praying for his family. It's a continual thing. Just to, if you give me just a few minutes, a few minutes. There's about, Mr. Harris know, and, and my cousin back there, Mr. Perkins, he knows. I dealt with a situation five, four, five, six years ago. Same situation with my mother. I know that God answered prayer. We ain't holding the service, we're not holding a worship service, but I know for sure that, that he worked and he answered prayer. Mr. Harris saw my mother in the nursing home, what she looked like. She wouldn't eat, didn't want to eat, and had that desire. I would come to these meetings, and my mind was so far away from these meetings because of the lady that brought me into this world. And I, when I looked at you, I'm saying, you know, you, you, we had a discussion, but you were working through that discussion. And it's God carrying you through those discussions. Well, I'm saying something because Sunday, we had, we hadn't had, had service in our church in a year and a half since COVID. And it was our second Sunday being back in worship service. So my mom, she walks with a walker. And just to see her coming in that door, giving God thanks for coming back in, that meant so much to me. And I got so emotional. I'm an emotional person anyway. I can look at a movie and get emotional. But she would turn 85 years old on Saturday. And there I am doing a devotion service, and I'm seeing her come in the door. And I, my heart really got heavy because tomorrow I turn 64 years old. And I'm saying, she had, she, you know, she birthed me in this world almost 64 years ago, and look at her coming in. Well, I, again, I'm saying, I know that God answered prayer. If he took my mother off her bed.
Well, I, again, I'm saying, I know that God answered prayer, if he took my mother off our bed, he surely going to have your dad, I've been knowing your dad for a long time. And I know your heart is heavy, and, and, and we continue to pray, prayer, it changes things. That's how it has enabled us to come to the board meeting, you know, last meeting, I said, we had a very good meeting. We have people look at us on, 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 on TV, and they're calling me, telling me, and y'all was together. I say, there's times that, that, that we have our differences, but at the end of the day, because of the chairman, a chairman, a great chairman, a great leader, I, I appreciate every one of you commissioners, uh, I think about you, and I'm even working at night, and y'all in bed asleep. But anyway, I, I, I just want to say, I thank, uh, Academy of Charity and Mr. Harris, we have a great group. And I, I appreciate you guys for how we do, and what we do, and we work things out, we work together. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to end with that, that's my sermon for tonight.
I like that sermon.
Commissioner Lamb?
I, I just want to continue to thank the, this board, and each one of you for reaching out, and, you know, it's been a long, long 30 days, Dad's been in hospital 30 days, a little over 30 days. I'm going to be there a little bit longer, but, uh, you know, the support from the community and, and people here is just overwhelming the board and, and whatnot, but, uh, we'll get through it, y'all will get us through it, it always does, and this, this storm too shall pass. Um, on a lighter note, another land came into the world on Monday morning, my, my brother had his third, third child, a little boy.
Awesome.
Um, so, uh, it's unfortunate with COVID now, it's kind of hard to get up there and see him, so with everything we got on, we've been a busy family, the hospitals are loving our bank accounts, but. But, uh, anyway, um, I want to thank Jimmy, Jimmy does a fine job, you know, with what Commissioner Hale said, and, and, uh, you know, we're, we're headed in the right direction with Dad, we'll get there, it's just going to take some time, so I appreciate everything.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hale?
Really don't have anything other than, I think you folks know, we've had a couple of deaths here, and then also, obviously, Mr. Land's father, so just continue to pray for all the people in Swan County, and, you know, there's a lot of folks out there, we don't know what they're going through, and just lift them up, that's all we can do, so, that's all.
Yes, sir. I just echo the same from the board, I, I, uh, look forward to Mr. Terry getting out of there and getting back, and coming in here and sitting back there in the back, and being part of it. Really miss that, and he's in a good spot, and he'll got some good cares, so we'll see him soon, I feel very confident.
Mr. Hale, I'll say one thing, I heard Mr. Fleming talking about his mom, uh, and I hope this ain't going too far, but, so my wife takes care of his mom, she, she's his nurse, and, uh, would you say she'll be 85?
85.
Yeah, but she still thinks she can whip every one of those kids, if she had to. I guarantee, yeah, and, and she worries about them, she tells my wife about it, and of course Patty tells me about it, so, uh, you got a great mom, I just want to say that.
Thank you.
You got a great mom.
Yep, I, I echo that, too, and biggest thing this evening, and it's, uh, I just want to wish you a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Maybe I reached that 100.
Absolutely.
You want me to sing, too?
Yes, sing.
If you don't start taking your wife out on her, on your anniversary, you ain't going to reach that 100.
I heard that.
More than cheese.
More than a hamburger.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but we just want to wish you a happy birthday, and, uh, enjoy your day, and we, we appreciate your friendship and your guidance, I, you've, uh, been a, just led the way for me since I, since I talked to you when I was, before I was ever Commissioner, I sat down and talked to him, he's, he's working on an old car or something out there, I pulled up, talked to him, he kept on working, but he talked to me, he's turning wrenches. But, uh, I just appreciate your friendship and your mom, they're, I'm blessed, they're in, in my, uh, district, and, uh.
Yeah.
She, she keep, they'll keep me straight, them brothers and sisters and everybody out there. But, uh, I appreciate y'all, and with that, all we need is a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lamb?
Say it.
Say it by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.